This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Great, thank you. If I could have everyone's attention pursuant to the North Haven Town Charter, Section 908, this special town meeting will now come to order. Good evening, my name is Stacy Yorber. I'm the Town Clerk and Tax Collector for North Haven. It's my duty to call this special town meeting to order. But before we can actually begin the meeting, we must elect a moderator. The moderator is nominated and elected by members of the meeting. It is the moderator's function to bring before the meeting all items of the warning and to assist in obtaining the objective of the meeting while ensuring the rights of the individual voters who wish to be heard. The moderator's duties also include helping any member of the meeting who seeks clarification or to advise them with regard to parliamentary procedure. Further, when it's time to vote on any issue tonight, including the moderator, please be aware that to vote on any issue, one must be an elector for the Town of North Haven. To be an elector for the Town, you must either be, one, a registered voter in the Town at the time of the most recent election, or, two, one who has paid, who is expected to pay, to the Town on an assessment of property of not less than $1,000 on the most recent grand list assessment date, as well as a citizen of the United States at 18 years of age or older. This regulation will be in force for all votes taken tonight, and if you're not sure if you're an elector, you can check with me as I have a list of all electors with me. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for any nominations for our meeting moderator.
I don't have any trees available.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations for meeting moderator? Hearing none, at this time, I will put this issue to a vote. All in favor, Teresa R. Insiato-Villi, as tonight's special town meeting moderator. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Hearing none, I now declare that Teresa R. Insiato-Villi is our meeting moderator.
Thank you, good evening. Any changes to the...
Not that I'm aware of. Okay. Sometimes I'm the last to know.
The Town Clerk will now read the warning call of tonight's special town meeting.
Okay, great. On March 7, 2019, the following was noticed. Notice is hereby given of a special town meeting of the Town of North Haven to be held on Monday, March 25, 2019, at 5:30 PM in the upstairs conference room, which is number one, of the North Haven Memorial Town Hall, 18 Church Street, for the following purpose: A, to consider and vote upon the acceptance of Windings Brook Road as a road of the Town of North Haven with the recommendation of the Town Engineer; and B, to consider and vote upon whether to adopt an amendment to Section 32-9 of Article 5 of the Finances Ordinance at Chapter 32 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven, which to increase the value of contracts requiring public bid is authorized by Town Charter, Section 406A, from the amount of $750,000 to $25,000.
Seventy-five hundred.
So, did I say seventy-five, sorry, thousand? Seventy-five hundred to $25,000. Please excuse me.
The Town Clerk will now read the first item on the agenda for this evening.
Agenda item number one. Number one, resolve that in accordance with the recommendation of the Town Engineer, the following road is deemed accepted as a road of the Town of North Haven, Windings Brook Road. Is there a second?
One.
Okay. Okay, for any ensuing discussion to this and the next item, anyone who wishes to speak will get a chance to comment. For anyone will be called a second time. You must come forward to the microphone, state your name and address before you begin to speak. And discussion will be limited to Agenda Item Number One only at this time. Is there any discussion for Agenda Item One? Yes, Town Engineer Bevalacqua.
Hi, Andy Bevalacqua, Town Engineer. So, this is for Windings Brook Road. Windings Brook is located on Patton Road, 170 feet west or so from Tiller Court. It's a 750-foot-long-by-24-foot-wide cul-de-sac with five-foot concrete sidewalks, five-foot snow shelf on each side. The road services six residential lots, five of which have been completed and sold, and one is still under construction. All lots are serviced by sanitary sewer. It was approved by Inland Wetlands back in 2012 and Planning and Zoning in 2013. Majority of the construction was completed several years ago, with the last final pavement course placed in November of last year. All required easements have been recorded in the land records, and a homeowners association has been established for maintenance of the detention base and in the common areas.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item number one? Okay. Seeing no hands, all in favor of calling the question as to item number one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion passes. All in favor, number one of tonight's agenda, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Aye.
Any nay? No. Motion passes. The Town Clerk will now read the second item on the agenda this evening.
Agenda item number two, resolve that in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance, an amendment to Section 32-9 of Article 5 of the Finances Ordinance is hereby approved and adopted at Chapter 32 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to increase the value of contracts requiring public bid as authorized by Town Charter, Section 406A, from $7,500 to $25,000. The amendment to Section 32-9 of Article 5 of the Finances Ordenses shall be published in a newspaper having a circulation in the Town of North Haven and shall be effective 15 days after said publication. All other terms and provisions of Section 32-9 remain unchanged and in full force and effect. Is there a second?
Okay. We're now entered into discussion period. Again, if anyone wishes to speak, come up to the microphone, state your name and address before you begin. Discussion will be limited to Agenda Item Number Two. Is there any discussion? Mr. Swankowski.
Good evening. I'm Ed Swankowski, Director of Finance for the Town of North Haven, and what we're looking to do is increase the bid threshold from $7,500 to $25,000 at the recommendation of our auditor from O'Connor-Davies. This doesn't mean we will not bid items less than that if we feel necessary. As it is now, we price, put about, just around 30 items out to bid every year because they're over the $7,500 threshold, and about 60 percent of them, 65 percent of them are over $25,000 anyway. And personally, any of the major items are going to go to the town meeting, any of the capital projects. So, we're just looking to save a few dollars and some administrative time by increasing it from $7,500 to $25,000. And we have other resources that we use as well, whether it be the state bid list or other bid lists are out there that we could follow, just to make sure we get a fair price. And if we don't think we're getting a fair price, believe me, we'll be checking and bidding it if we find it necessary. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Mr. Katz. And I'm going to ask Mr. Swankowski to just come up and answer, no, if there's any questions.
Sure.
Thanks.
Sherman Katz, Sherwood Drive. I hope, what am I about to say, will have an impact on the way you think and vote here tonight. I don't think it will, but I'm going to talk anyhow. Several years ago, Department head used the State of Connecticut bid list to secure a supplier to provide a service in the amount of just under $20,000. I questioned his purchase and found the same service would have been provided by a local firm for under $15,000. I called this to the attention of the Department head, and the next time a similar service was put out to bid, there was no less than four bidders, and the winner was one-third lower than the bidder that was on the previous job. By increasing the bid level to $25,000, this opens the door to the following: complacency. If the administrator may be too busy or inexperienced to seek out the most economical and best assignment, we could be overpaying thousands of dollars for hundreds of purchases. The cost of an ad in the paper is not that much. The time that the department spends for putting together a bid, they still have to put together a specification, so it's just a question of another sheet of paper for a bid. So, we shouldn't worry about 10 minutes of time for a person. I am not implying this is the case, but this opens the door to the temptation of kickbacks and bribes. Using Michael's analogy, many years ago in my business life, I was offered many bribes and kickbacks as incentives to use some of my possible suppliers and contractors. I can tell you, I was insulted and I would drop these suppliers. I understand the bean counters may be telling you other communities and businesses have a $25,000 bid line, but then again, other communities split their car taxes in half and we don't. Other communities do certain things that we don't do, and we do things that they don't do. So, we don't have to follow other people. There are many things, many other things, I'm sorry, there are many things other communities and businesses do that does not mean it is right for us. All communities and businesses, I can point out a dozen things North Haven does not emulate. Forty years ago, many accounting firms convinced businesses to have their comptrollers and finance directors have influence on the operation of the business end of the industry. Many of those companies went belly up or near belly up. No disrespect. Bean counters and lawyers are just that. They're bean counters and lawyers. They don't all have business savvy. Thank you for your attention, and I hope you will consider this before voting. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to item number two? Nancy Barrett.
Nancy Barrett, Chris V. Drive. So, I have a series of, hopefully, very short questions. So, Mr. Swankowski, would you mind, please, describing the private bidding process used in North Haven to obtain competitive bids for projects under $7,500 in value historically? And could you please distinguish that from the public bidding process used to date in North Haven to obtain competitive bids for projects that exceed $7,500 in value?
Sure. Right now, items that are over $1,000, between $1,000 and $2,500, the departments are required to get three verbal quotes. Between $2,500 and $7,500, they have to produce three written quotes to the finance director, which is myself, and anything over that will be out to a formal bid.
So, the current $7,500...
You got to speak at the microphone.
Sure. So, the current $7,500 limit, what is the distinction between the process you described?
Well, if it's over $7,500, we'll advertise it.
Go ahead.
If it's over $7,500, we'll advertise it, give the vendors a certain amount of time to put their bids together, then they'll submit it to the Department of Finance, and on the given day, all the bids are read and the lowest bid is taken.
Okay. But any, any contracts that exceed whatever threshold we decide, whether it be $7,500 or $25,000, the process is dictated by the state, correct? Whereas those contracts that are below the threshold, it is really up to the Town or your discretion as to how many bids you solicit and which ones you go with.
Well, we get at least three, three verbal for the under $2,500, three written for anything between $25 and $75, anything over that, as many as are submitted. Sometimes there might only be one bidder, other times there might be a dozen bidders, especially on bigger projects.
Okay. Why specifically did the auditors propose this increased threshold from $7,500 to $25,000? And what did the auditors suggest would be the financial benefit to our Town? I know it's been suggested that we could be reducing our ad costs, but is this specifically what the auditors recommended as being the primary incentive for this change?
Yeah, he's looking at saving dollars, and he's looking at the best practices, and he compared that to other municipalities, and this is what he's seeing in various municipalities.
Okay. And then specifically, which other towns in Connecticut did the auditors say have, currently have a $25,000 public bid threshold included in their town ordinances?
He did not state the towns. He said towns of similar size.
Oh, okay. And then, again, historically, specifically for North Haven, what number or fraction of North Haven Town and BOE contracts annually fall first under $7,500 and then between $7,500 and $12,000, oh, sorry, $25,000 compared to the total number of contracts? And is there an expectation that the number of contracts under $25,000 will increase substantially in the near future?
I can't speak for the Board of Ed, but for the last three years, our bid, number of bids that have gone out over $7,500 have been in the neighborhood of about 30 per year, and of those 30, 60 percent of them have been over $25,000. So, that's our history.
So...
I don't have the detail between the...
Okay, we need to... All right, I'm going to just say, Nancy, any other ques... Ask all your questions, or the rest of them now and then, have Mr. Swankowski answer them just for clarification, back and forth.
Sure.
People watching.
And then, this is just the last question. Again, if the intended purpose of this proposed threshold change is to reduce the Town's expenditure on legal ads and to reduce the administrative or time costs associated with public bidding, let's address those two assumptions. One, what are the actual, not budgeted, annual legal costs in North Haven for public bid newspaper ads? How would that expense change with this higher threshold? And two, wouldn't the Town's administrative time or costs actually increase rather than decrease as a result of the expanded private bidding process? Specifically, wouldn't you have to go soliciting multiple bids rather than just reacting to contractors' responses to an ad?
Right now, I couldn't tell you exactly what the cost is, but I know that either way, we have to call individual vendors, we'd have to do that either way, even with the bid, because sometimes we don't know, we need a ballpark number just to put it out and have an idea what to put in some of these bids. So, that's going to happen either way.
So, you don't have an idea of the actual ad expenditures that we're trying to...
No, there could be four or five amounts if we go with the certain...
I mean, total.
I don't know, grand total.
So, it's just to reduce whatever the amount is?
Correct.
And the part two to that was, don't you think that your administrative cost would increase, administrative time would increase?
No, not necessarily, because somebody has to sit there when the bids come in. We have to respond to all the bidders that bid or didn't, that won the bid versus the ones that lost the bid. So, there's a lot more administrative time involved than putting an actual bid out, because the, when we get the three written quotes or verbal quotes, those come from, come from the department, so they prepare the backup. So, from the finance point of view, a lot of extra work comes into the bidding process in our department.
Okay, so, so you're not able to actually quantify the savings associated with this change?
We have, that would be very hard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to question number two? Third Select, Sally Boyer. Stay there, please.
Sally Boyer, 5 Blossom Drive. I got to tell you, I've been up and down on this. When it was first discussed, I believe it was at a Board of Finance meeting, I had asked you some, some questions, and I understand that this was really came from the auditors.
Yes.
You know, I don't really understand why, I mean, this is a policy decision, this is a legislative decision. Why would, I can understand the auditors caring about how, you know, how we comply with GASP and make sure that we're following all appropriate accounting requirements that municipalities are required to comply with, but why, why would they be interested in this policy decision? I really, you know, don't, don't get that at all. Why, you know, I don't, I don't ask, I don't hear them ever saying, suggesting any other ways for us to save money. They're basically looking at our accounting practices. So, what is their reason for caring about saving what's really a few thousand dollars? I've looked at, you know, there's legal advertising on several different departments throughout the budget, and I, you know, they're, they're not very high. So, we're not talking about a lot of money compared to, you know, a $100 million budget area that we're at. So, why, why do you really think the auditors would care about this legislative decision? Do you...
I think because he does quite a few audits, and if he goes from each municipality, he sees that we're just way out of line with the others, and he said, you know, it wouldn't hurt to bring it up. So, I think that was his basis.
Okay. And I believe state law puts a limit on this. Basically, what we're doing is we're exempting, if we should pass this, we are exempting contracts $25,000 and under from the formal bidding process. And I believe that's the most that we could, that's the highest we could go. At one point, I was looking at the history of this, years ago, in the 50s and 60s, it was 600. Then, in 1981, when the charter was adopted in Section 406 of the charter, it was 1,000. And then in 2009, it went up to 7,500. And I believe that $25,000 is the max. Is that your understanding?
I'm not sure about that.
I thought I saw the statutory reference.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
Just keep in mind, though, even though the bidding threshold's 25, like Sherman was talking about not using the state bid, but if I look at a construction project, those I'm not going to just take right off the state bid, because you get people that'll come in with a very low price because they want some work. So, on items like that, I will still put those out to bid even if it was under 25. So, I use my discretion and my history with working and purchasing to understand when I should look elsewhere.
But this is, this, the way the ordinance is worded, it's for contracts for personal property and services, not just construction. I mean, this covers a lot of...
Well, anything, I thought, right.
A lot of different stuff that the Town contracts for, lots of different stuff. And that's, that leads to one of the questions that I have from your opening remarks.
Okay, Sally, microphone, yeah. Address everything up here.
Okay. In Mr. Swankowski's opening remarks, he had said that if we feel it necessary, we could still go out to bid. So, my question is, what sort of criteria would you, would you deem appropriate to determine, even if we pass this, when you would still go out to bid? Do you recall saying that in your opening remarks?
Yes.
So, you just said, "if we feel it was necessary." Those were your exact words. So, what sort of criteria would, would it be based on just experience or whether it was for a service or for personal property or for what? Sorry, I should talk to you. Can you just discuss those criteria?
Sure. I think a lot of it would be based on certain construction jobs, because I know those are all over the board when you go out and bid or get asked for prices from people, and just some of the things from our prior history. We know we bid this job before, and we have an idea where it should be. So, and if it comes in high, we would just go out and bid. If we got the three quotes and thought they were kind of high, we would buy and bid.
And by high, what sort of percentage increase would you use? It would change, okay. In response to something Mrs. Barrett had said, you know, she was asking questions that were sort of in line with the questions I was asking the finance director at the February Board of Finance meeting about administrative costs. You did say that on the Town side, and I think it's unfortunate, because this change would also apply to the Board of Ed, correct? I think it's unfortunate that there's no one from the Board of Ed to, you know, a financial person from the Board of Ed here to, to help out, but you did give some figures on the Town side. You said that 30 per year are over $7,500, and of that, 60 percent are over $25,000. Did I hear that right? So, we're not really talking about a lot of contracts.
Right, so, as I said, the point is to move it up.
But that's exactly why you should keep it there, because we're not really talking about a lot. It can't be administratively overwhelming with such a small number, and I would think that the formal bid process would be more likely, to Mr. Katz's point, of getting a more competitive bid that would, you know, negate the extra money for the legal ads. I mean, I don't mind spending 50 bucks for a legal ad if it saves $1,000 on the bid. And my other question is, you had talked about for some of the, currently, some of the contracts for whether, whether it's for services or, or personal property, you would get three verbal bids, right?
Under $2,500.
Under $2,500. And over $2,500, you would get written, but that would be without the formal bid process, because right now it's $7,500. So, who do you, how, who do you get them from? How is that determined, where those verbal and/or written bids come from if you're not going out to bid? How is that determined? Is it based on experience or what?
Now, each department is required to come up with the three bids. They're familiar with the vendors that would do the work. A lot of times, I have no idea who would do the work, so they'd be the ones who come up with the three written quotes and send them over to finance.
Okay, so, it could change from department to department, perhaps. Okay, you know, again, I, at first, it sounded administratively prudent to me when I first thought about this, but really, listening to Mr. Katz's comments, which I agreed with, and the points that Mrs. Barrett made, I'm having a hard time going, going along with this, but, so, thank you for your answers.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to question two? Mr. Katz, you're up again. Would you like Mr. Swankowski to stay or can he sit down?
Pardon me?
Mr. Swankowski, does he need to...
He'll sit. I like Mr. Swankowski. I've known him for many, many years, and I supported his appointment to the position of...
That's okay.
Okay. What I want to say is, he may find another job somewhere, and we'll have a new comptroller here. We don't know what he's like. We don't know how experienced he is. We know this man. I'll give you some experience. Many years ago, there was a town that wanted to do a job that was about $20,000, which require a written, a bid process. What they did is they split it into four separate jobs so they could stay under the limits. There's many ways around this. It all depends on who the, who's at bat. I still say, after hearing everything, I am really against this. I don't think it would harm us to continue doing what we're doing now. And that's it.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we are going to vote on the resolution, but let me just say one thing, and I thank, I thank Stacy for letting me know. We are going to add, from now on, a, an aye, a nay, and if anyone wants to abstain, if I am running the meetings, I will ask for people who want to abstain. So, I apologize for not doing it the first time.
But I'll just add that it is not a requirement. It's by, by preference of the moderator at the time of the meeting.
Thank you for doing that. Very welcome. So, now, we will vote on the resolution. All in favor of number two on tonight's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Anybody who wants to abstain, signify by saying abstain. Okay, the motion passes.
With regard to nays?
To nay.
I can't count on the ayes and the nays.
Two or three.
I don't think I need it. I think it's one, two, three, four, it was, it passed. We could do it again, that'd be fine. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four. All opposed, signify by raising your hand. Three. The motion passes four to three. We will now end the meeting. I thank Mr. Swankowski for standing up there, and as there is no further business to be considered, I hereby declare tonight's special town meeting adjourned. The minutes will be made available to the public by the Town Clerk as soon as possible.
This is going to turn into a mess.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from... The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.